Seeing none, we will move on to item four, the consent agenda approval of the July 29, 2009 minutes.
July 21st.
July 21st, I'm sorry, thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the minutes, or not?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second approval by Harden, second by McCool. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All opposed?
Have to abstain because I wasn't here.
Is that true of everyone who voted was here? I'm not sure you're that's.
You have to be here to approve the minutes, you have to have been here to approve the minutes because you have to.
I suppose.
Have had, been there for the conversation, right?
I guess that's true. Alright, so it's four, four and one abstention, is that it?
Five.
Oh, five.
I think you could just approve what we said.
Five and one abstention. So the motion passes. Okay, sorry, moving on to item five of the agenda's new business public hearing regarding changes to section 16, 191 of Superior Municipal Code. I will, let's see, open the public hearing. Phyllis, is there proof of the publication?
Yes, there is.
Okay. I guess I did bang the gavel to open the public hearing, okay, thank you, thanks. Does the applicant have a presentation, is that staff in this case, or Mr. Cuffner?
Staff.
You're up.
I'll just sort of summarize the requests. Requests were actually made by Mr. George Cuffner, who was a resident of Superior, and I think in the packet is his letter of request. The requests are, basically end up being changes to the chart, which is the scheduled requirements in 16 dash, I believe it's 191 of the code. And these changes that are being suggested relate to two items. One is the side setback in the RL and the RM zone district. And the, actually, the side setback relates only to the RM district. And then the other changes deal with lot coverage, which affect both the RL and the RM district, okay? So, the suggestion is that for the RM district, for a side setback, for a multifamily building, basically, in the RM district, that you, if you have an interior lot line, the side setback is five feet. That equates to 10 feet between two buildings, assuming they build to the side setback, okay? Now, the side yard, there's, since there's two entries for side yard setback, the second entry deals with when you abut a street, so this is obviously a building that's on a corner. So if you have a side setback on a corner, you've got obviously a front setback on one street and a side setback on the other. Suggestion there is to change that also from 10 feet to five, RM district, okay? Now, there's a note that goes with the 10-foot setback that exists now for the RM district for a lot abutting the street on the side. And that deals with, basically, that if you have a single-family dwelling, or a two-family duplex dwelling in this district, you want to build it, you can have a five-foot setback. The idea there is that the buildings are relatively small, single-family, plus maybe duplex, or a duplex. So that has been there, that note has been there for quite some time, that you can build with a five-foot setback, for those two types of structures. But not anything over, right now, if you're over a duplex, you would have to have 10 feet. So the suggestion is to go to five for those larger buildings. That's the side setback issue. Are there any questions on that?
I want, so I didn't read that, and I may want to ask the applicant what he meant. So what I was reading in here is that he requested a change in the land use code under chapter 16, under the scheduled requirements for RM side yards from 10 to 5 for both interior and abutting, that there wasn't a request to change RL. And did I read this?
No, there's no changes to RL for the side setback.
Okay.
It's already at five.
And did he, did he, so RL right now is five?
Yes.
And, in Georgia, is that correct that you're?
Well, I'm sorry, you gotta, Noel, it's five for an interior lot line for the RL, and 10 for a side setback abutting a street.
And are there any suggested changes to RL that you're recommending?
No, not, not in the side setback.
But for the percent lot coverage?
Percent, yeah.
Okay. And I didn't quite get that out here, too, so I'm kind of curious.
I had the same question. His letter did not say anything about RL changing the side setback.
No.
Lot coverage. It didn't say anything about changing the lot coverage.
And that was your intention, that's what I mean, it is?
Correct.
Can you, George, could you come, come to the microphone real quick, since it's a public hearing and it's being recorded? And introduce yourself.
109 South Fourth. What's your question now?
Whether or not you, whether you were requesting the RL zoning to be changed, to change the lot coverage from 30% to 40%, for RL.
That's low residential.
And RM.
That's correct.
You're requesting?
That's correct.
Okay. I just couldn't tell from here for sure.
We'd just as well have a uniform, instead of one this way and one this way. Thirty foot, our lots are 50 foot by 140 feet, and then when you set these setbacks at 10 feet on medium residential, you've got a 30-foot building, which is not very big building to be built, according to low residential building, which only have five-foot setbacks. Now, 1997 is where this came up, Mr. McGinnis, in May, and that's when it was changed. We've paid taxes on medium residential lots, there's been no building in this town because the lots are not big enough to build them, at that settings that you have set now. Now, why am I, the only one, out of 200 pages, being requested for these two changes in here? You know, I think you people should have done this land use code book, you'd have had some hours under your belt, instead of the town offering $25,000 to our attorneys and our committee to do this. I mean, you're questioning what they're doing. Then you say, well, you've got to come before the board and request a change, well, I am requesting a change for that to be uniform. My taxes come, it comes on 7,000 feet, it don't come on, build on 30%. Has for since 1975. That's when we got this zoning, and state, when the first land use code book come out. And I am requesting that. That's not necessarily a interpretation of the change. It was that way. If you have more questions than that.
Thank you.
I have a question for Fred. The side yard abutting the street, do you remember what that was originally in the 1997? Is that?
No, I don't.
Your microphones, 10.
Came from here, but there, but there were some changes, so, no, I didn't look back at me that far off in the distance code.
I think I have that code here.
Do you? I would like, and I can go get it if Bob doesn't have it, because I'd like to know if that was 10-foot at that time. So, if you don't have it, I'll go get it.
Okay. I'll take a look here. For RL?
Yes.
Okay. You want to keep going, Fred?
Yeah. The second change that, that we've already sort of discussed it is the change from, in the RL zone and the RM zone, of 30% coverage to 40%, which allows, you know, a larger, you know, structure to be, you know, to cover the lot. Now, in your packet, first of all, there's two diagrams. One shows the map of the town, the areas that are affected are basically, you know, by these changes are in dark blue, which is basically the original town proper. And then the areas that are in red, which are currently zoned RM now, okay? So that's that diagram. And there is a difference in shade of color between the dark blue and the slightly lighter blue, okay? So the dark blue is in the original town area, and that's originally planted town. So those are the areas, the RL zones are in dark blue, and the RM zones are in red. There's also a piece of RM on Coal Creek Drive to the, to the west, which has been there for quite some time. Those are the three areas of RM currently in the town now. The other diagram shows the difference with, in a 30% coverage versus a 40% coverage. 30% being in gray, and 40% being yellow. The, the map actually has a scale to it, and it's one inch equals 20 feet. So although the, the coverage areas are shown there, the setbacks are not. Basically, the setback, if you use those side setback, if you scale that distance in white, it's actually seven feet, okay? So, basically, if you made a building that was from setback to setback, in terms of a five-foot setback, this diagram would widen somewhat and squash somewhat in order to have the same coverage as 30 versus 40%, all right? It's just not drawn so that it maxes out the lot from setback to setback, but it gives you an idea of, of the change of the maximum size of, of the structure, in terms of its footprint on the ground. The other thing that's, using the scale, is if you have the front of the lot as at the bottom, the normal setback in both of these zone districts is 25 feet, and that is exactly where the edge of the yellow line is, is at 25 feet. The rear setback is required to be 20 feet. The rear setback, if it's the top of the diagram, is, exceeds, it's probably on the order of 30 feet. Just give you an idea of how this thing is oriented, and what that means. But this assumes a lot that, you can get the idea of it was like two interior lines, except that the white space is actually seven feet and not five. That's just the way the drawing, you just have to kind of use your imagination to say, okay, if I build out to a five-foot setback, that, this diagram's going to be squashed a little bit and widened, that's all that happens. Those are two interior lot lines. Now, later on in, in the analysis part of the, of the staff report, there's a bit of a concern that if you have a five-foot setback, that has lots of street, which is being, what is being requested. That gives you only five feet to the property line for whatever landscaping you would have. If it was 10 feet, you'd get a little bit more. So that would be then, if you, if you put the building setback to setback, you'd lose 10 foot on one side and 5 foot on the other. But it doesn't have anything to do with how you, and that would give you a 35-foot width building, setback to setback. It wouldn't have any effect really on the coverage, because you would still have plenty of room to get the 40% coverage and still get within the front and the rear setbacks. So that was just a concern that we raised. You have a building wall that's within 5 feet of the property line, and an RM building greater than, say, a duplex, you're probably going to have a larger buildings, therefore you have this wall there. And so that's just an issue, it's more of a stake issue than anything else. Normally, on any, in any block, when you have houses that face one street, and they abut a street because they're on a corner, side setback is always greater than the interior one. Because obviously, the front setback is fairly long, in this case, it's 25 feet. To give some balance, on almost every zoning area, as I've seen, the side setback abutting the street is larger than necessarily the interior setback. So that's all. But it, whether that, you do that or not, it, it doesn't affect the coverage. The actual coverage of the building will fit well with any, any of those setbacks. There's plenty of room. So basically, from our, from staff standpoint, we've got, we would basically recommend that we go ahead and discuss this application, or this suggestion, these requests, and decide whether to, basically, recommend to the Board of Trustees that you approve, that they approve it, or you may have some other suggestions of, of your own, in terms of these two basic issues.
Fred, so, questions?
Do you know offhand what the difference in height restriction between low and medium is?
They're both 32 feet.
Oh, they're both 32?
Yeah, they're the same.
Okay.
So.
So the specific concerns about multifamily is just that typically it would be larger and therefore maybe smaller out of necessity?
There's another, there's another issue, I mean, there's always the potential for someone who owns an area of land that's zoned RM, to instead ask for a PD, a plan development. At that point, we would discuss, well, what kind of setbacks do you want? And we would start with the RM setbacks as a base from which to discuss this thing. And it depends on how that was oriented and created, and what, what that would, what that would mean. We may want to, in that negotiation, stick with those setbacks or not, depending on the design of the, of the project. So I'll just throw that in, sort of a complicating factor, but it's, it's there, because that's what.
It's another option for property owner flexibility, essentially.
That's correct. They also have that option, which some may elect do, and, you know, some may not, I mean, it's up to, you know, the property owner.
I'll also add, we heard from Rock and Mount Fire District, they looked at this, and they indicated they had no issues with this request change.
Any more questions? Thanks.
Okay. Is that it? We can go to item six, questions of staff, or any others besides?
They're already asked already, it's okay. Okay. Did you say the 40% lot coverage could fit within the existing setbacks? I hear you indicate that. Well, sure, if you have, take this diagram, the gray-yellow diagram, and if, if scale it 1 to 20 feet, the white space on the side is actually seven. So the real setback is being proposed, for an interior lot lines anyways, is five feet on each side. So that building could go to those setbacks, but it would be lengthened on the short side to go in between the setbacks, and then squashed on the long side in order to make up the same square footage that you have here.
But the 40% coverage?
No problem.
Would fit within existing setbacks that we have?
It definitely fits within existing setbacks that we have today.
It just makes for longer, longer buildings.
Yeah, you have a tendency to elongate the building, the more setback you have on the side. And I think Mr. Cuffner's argument is, while if you have 10 to 10, subtract from 50 is 30. And so there's some issues that 30-foot building across is maybe a little narrow. On the other hand, with, you know, it, we've seen buildings like that, but, obviously, you can see from the gray and yellow diagram, too, that the difference between 30 and 40% isn't a lot, but in terms of square footage, there, there is some added value there for sure.
So what are the differences, so, you know, in the, in the RM that's, that's on, on fourth, between fourth and fifth, we've got single lots, double lots, maybe even a, was it a triple lot, basically sized lot, so that, in that situation, then, so let's, let's say, let's say on the corner of, the one that's on the southwest corner of Fourth and William, which is, which is a half a lot, basically, right? Full square. So in that situation, under the existing code, could a multifamily structure that consumes an entire lot be built?
Well, I.
Five foot setback, or 10, let's say, under existing code?
Well, you have.
With setbacks of 25.
You have to meet the setbacks, but it also that.
Per lot, per, per?
It's per lot.
Per sixth of an acre, per sixth of an acre lot, or for that whole, I mean, that's, is that one lot that I'm looking at there, or is that, is that three lots?
Well, I don't know, I mean, the lines look like, like on that particular drawing, there's, there's one line separating two, looks like large parcels, but I don't know whether that's true or not.
Can I try to answer that?
Sure.
I think this map shows more ownership, so if somebody has two lots, it shows that, that ownership of two lots.
Right.
But they are lots of 50 by 140.
They're platted.
They're, they're all 50 by 140. They're not 100 by 140.
Yeah, Phyllis is right, that, that looks like it occurs all in this diagram, because there are several lots that we know that people, in here, that people have all two lots.
Two lots.
But the lots actually exist per plat, as per the plat.
So then, okay, so as it would sit today, they would be, the buildings would have to be on each platted lot?
Well, I think.
I'd like to have a resource.
Yeah, well, well.
So I know there's probably things that can be done to change that, but as, as code reads today, that's, in that case, you could put three buildings that fit on each.
Right, and the way to get rid of that is to, you know, get rid of the interior lot line, and work with that.
So you could apply for a lot line re-adjustment?
You could apply for a lot line erasure, which is basically a replat.
So, okay, so let's say that would happen, and that was approved, then what are you permitted to do if you have two lots? Under this existing law, you have these three, let's say, you know, let's say, just for argument, this represents one over, and you can buy three lots.
You have a bigger lot, you'd be constrained by whatever setbacks we have.
So that's now one lot?
Right.
So you could do 40% or, well, today, 30% coverage on that entire lot?
Right.
You'd have to meet 10-foot setbacks, which would be real easy on a lot that size, but, and 25 foot in the front, and whatever the back was.
20 in the back.
So is a lot line adjustment, is that something that comes before the order, is that a staff level?
Well, no, you have to, that's something that has to be approved. We don't do it by administrative.
No, it's kind of planning commission, town board.
It's a plat, it's like.
Anything.
It's a replat, we had it over here, we had a group that wanted to do that, and to switch the lots around.
Yeah, the Bennetts, they came to Colorado for a replat.
Nothing really changed, except the direction of the lot line, but it had to be an approved deal, it was here and all.
And, and then, there are numbers, so in multi, and I have a lot of questions, sorry, that the, the, in the RM zoning, how many units can be placed on a, on a lot, I guess? So if you did a 30, you know, if you, I mean, could you do two stories and, you know, 15 units, or, you know, better, 500 square foot units, or, I mean, what, what are our, do we have any?
Yeah, that's right here.
Is that in there?
I think it's set up to six units, but.
Yeah.
That's the limit, it's gross maximum dwelling units per acre.
How, per acre?
So in RM, it's eight right now.
Per acre, so at 43,000 feet.
Or two.
43,560, right? So. Oh, okay, maximum dwelling units per acre.
This is a 6,000 foot square foot lot.
So on a sixth of an acre parcel?
You could get eight divided by six.
Which is like 1.2.
Or 1.1, or.
One, basically.
So you can't put multifamily on a sixth of an acre lot in our town?
Correct.
Well, you could, you know, if you have, you can put, you could have, to meet the minimum square footage of a unit, you could have like an apartment situation, you could probably get three, maybe four units. The problem is you're going to have.
But on a lot, but on a lot, the way it's platted today?
You can only get one.
You can only put one house, one, one, no, one?
It says one dwelling unit.
One dwelling unit.
Not in the RM.
Well, it says eight dwelling units, eight dwelling units per acre.
Look at density limits down here.
So it's a density limit of eight?
Eight per acre.
Eight units per acre, so if you have a sixth of an acre, that's eight divided by six, you can only get 1.2 dwelling units, something on a, on a, on a lot, so you can't even put a duplex on a lot.
6,000 feet is actually less than an eighth, right? Eighth, right, so you could put one.
So am I reading that correctly?
It's more like a seventh of an acre.
Oh, the, the.
6,000 foot lot, that's what this is, 150 by 40.
Okay.
6,000 feet.
You get 1.33333333.
So what you're getting at?
Now, no, because the density, note the qualifier, the density limits.
I'm getting there, that's my next comment.
The density limits are specific to the, to larger projects.
Yeah. I would like to get that clarified, for sure.
Say that again, where's that?
While we have our.
They easily apply for this case.
Oh, greater than six lots, okay.
So those don't, don't apply.
So, but you could, so you could put a duplex?
Yeah.
Following additional standards? Under RM?
The, the other thing you run up against is parking, is off-street parking. So there are a number of things you have to tussle with.
Well, can I get that question?
On one lot.
Can I get clarification on a single lot, but, I mean, so you, I, I see that, that it's, that those numbers are for greater than six lots?
Right.
With a total site area of two acres, do we have, does that mean we don't have any restrictions then on a single lot?
Okay.
That you can put as many dwelling units in a building that you can fit?
You can, in my, in my view, you, you can, but you have to meet the minimum size for the dwelling unit by the building code, and you have to meet the parking requirements. So what that then boils down to is, I don't know, I mean, it depends on the design. It really is a design issue.
So there's no, there's no restriction, only that it meets all other aspects of the code?
Right, that's.
Which includes parking, minimum size of a dwell, there is a minimum square footage for a dwelling unit, is that?
Yeah, there is.
So in series, you, you know, if you maxed it out 40%, you can make a building, you go two stories maybe, and however many dwelling units you can fit in there per, that meet the minimum square footage.
Right, and your parking's based on bedrooms, so.
Okay.
So if you have studios, that's a one bedroom, you have a one bedroom, that's a one bedroom. I mean, they're not very big units, but all of a sudden, you run into problems.
Okay.
To meet the off-street, off-street parking requirement?
Yes. For this multifamily.
Right, okay.
Then you meet the height restriction.
So in, let's see, so.
In practicality, it would be difficult to have probably more than like three units.
Right, but you can put two, I mean, yeah, you can do a duplex, that's what I was getting puzzled when I read that. So you can't, you can't put a duplex on there probably pretty comfortably.
Which makes sense.
Possibly a small apartment building with three, maybe, or, maybe, yeah, hard to say, depending on the design. Okay. Other questions? So then, can I keep going?
Sure.
So each block is basically an acre, is that true? So there's six blocks?
Twelve blocks.
There's 12, yeah, this, so this is, this is basically two acres right here, so like the, this, yeah, which would be. So then, if, if lots were combined, and we did have a two, so anywhere we have a two-acre parcel, then we are just, regardless of design, limited to eight dwelling units per acre, so we could put 16 dwelling units in a two-acre spot, okay?
Yes.
Okay.
We have enough problem.
And then, in the original town where we had like alleys, so that's, so even though they may have, if there were a single owner that owned all the lots on either side of an alley, that alley is still, is that?
As long as it's there, it's public.
That's public.
And it's not dedicated to either of the lots, it's a public piece, so, until that's eliminated.
Does the lot, does the lot split the alley?
Huh?
Does the lot split the alley?
Yes, well, no, the lot goes. Yes, well, no, the lot goes to the alley right away.
To the edge of the alley? Okay.
So the alley strip is public.
Got it, okay. So then, then the, the large RM over by, or, right here by Charlie's property?
Yes.
Are there alleys designated in there, or has that, do you know?
Some of the lots are platted. There are some platted lots in there, but not all, or not all of the parcels, on all of those half-blocks, whatever are allotted.
Okay, and so the platted lots have alleys?
Yes. I think so.
Yes.
Okay.
So the left hand of the red is-
Right.
Platted, the right hand, where under Gressel Park, is not platted.
Okay.
Right.
I just think it's important for us to understand what the possibilities are with changes to code. Does this affect one, this basically, again, affects original town period, there's nothing else in town that's impacted by these changes, and so I want to be very, make sure we do due diligence in thinking about how we're impacting the original town neighborhood, and Sagamore for that matter, with these changes. Okay, that's all I have so far.
Well, if you take the time to consider, for instance, Remington Homes proposition, you know, already those structures were much bar, bigger, bigger than the current structures in original town, and so if you add this, they just get bigger.
Well, those, that was a PD then.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I mean, a PD, and it's not been, yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I mean, it's-
Still, you know, the, the net effect is, you're gonna have much bigger buildings on, and much less space between the buildings, so the massing of the whole new stuff is gonna be much different than the old, and it will probably aesthetically not look great. And my concern with the, not that this is the time, but my concern with this is that if you have three times higher than you have wide between buildings, you're gonna create canyons, right? So you have a three-story apartment building, so it's thirty-two feet high, but there's only ten feet of space between, there's no sunlight getting in there, or very little anyway. You know, it's, well, depending on how you orient the buildings, obviously, but, so, so even, even just putting a ladder to the roof, seriously, of a thirty-two-foot building with only ten, ten feet of space in between can become a hazard to the person that has to go up the ladder. You know, because, because of the angle, I mean, you know, the ladder's gotta have some kind of angle under you. So that's my concern, and then the, then the, the five feet to the lot line, I mean, the five feet from the street thing also poses a canyon-like problem that I think is, is worth mentioning, you know, so, but none of that was questioned, sorry.
Yeah, not yet, we're not there yet. Was there a question in there?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Do you have any?
No questions.
Jason?
No, no questions.
Okay. The, the parcel over, beyond the-
Ochsner.
No, the, yeah, beyond Ochsner, but, yeah, next to the, next to the-
Storage.
Storage?
Yeah.
Are some of these lot, these lots are platted, you said already?
Part of a PD, right?
They're part of a PD?
Yeah, Kepner Subdivision.
No, no.
No, no, it's, they're platted, these lots are platted, but the zoning is, you know, I mean, the zoning's RM.
It's RM, right?
Yeah. But I believe they're mostly, they're all single-family units that are built over there, so that's just the way it is now, that's all. But the zoning is RM.
So the property that Danny's on, Danny Kepner, the beige, that's less industrial?
Yes, it is.
And does that have RM by right? Is it?
Oh, is it used?
Yeah.
I don't think so.
Dan's property?
Yeah.
Light industrial now, right?
It's light industrial.
Right, but the uses-
Does he have the use by right?
It's IL, which is light industrial, I guess you know that, all right. I don't see anything in here. I don't see any-
He's grandfathered in as a single family.
I don't, if there was a building there, like a multifamily building there, then it'd be grandfathered in, but I don't see it in the used list. In the industrial zones.
It wouldn't make sense to-
Normally, they're not there anyway, but I don't see it in, in our list, just to look at here.
How do we know what's grandfathered in? How do we know what things are grandfathered in?
The use was there prior to the, to the adoption of the zoning.
Do you mean the actual use of it? I mean, the owner would have had to, have had a multifamily dwelling unit on it, in which case, when land use was created, regardless of what it was, he has that used grandfathered in. And he has, I know there's a trailer, there's a house, and, just one trailer? Yeah, I think it's just one trailer on there, is that right? Okay. And that's a, that's a right, that's grandfathered as well, right, because we're on, okay. And that's not multi, that's, that is not, that's not multifamily related, where the trailers on the lots?
No.
Multifamilies in a trailer, depends on who you are, I think.
Yeah. Any other questions, or staff? If not, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to comment on the public hearing? If so, please step forward, state your name, and say what you've got to say.
Rick Kepner, 411 West Charles, good evening, guys, ladies and gentlemen. All I got to say is, you know, I've been here sixty years almost, people, and seen a lot of changes, we've seen a lot of good changes, a lot of bad changes. I feel ten percent on the lot coverage is nothing, but might stop some of these buildings going two stories if you let them go out a little more, to seven hundred square feet. Because that makes a heck of a difference in a tiny house or a little bit bigger one, in a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom. And, and I, I really think that ten percent, forty percent of seven thousands, that's nothing. We've already given sixty percent away from open, we can't do anything with it. So if we can build on forty percent of it, I know that I would build a two-story, and if you go through here where a lot of these lots is infilled and has built, a lot of those has went to two-story, and that's the reason, because they don't want to build a narrow small house. So it's what they've done, is they've went up, and I think it will stop the going up and let them go a little wider, or a little longer, that's all. And we're talking seven hundred square feet, that's all, on a seven thousand square foot lot. That don't mean that much, I don't, no, that's all with you guys. But, you know, it's hard to see us take thirty percent of seven thousand, twenty-one hundred square feet, and we're paying taxes on vacant lots over two thousand dollars right now, on a vacant lot, because we're assessed at twenty-nine percent assessed value. Now, if we put a small house on there, that comes down, okay? So we, we would like to do something with the property, I, I don't want it built, I mean, I've built here my whole life, I don't want to see a lot of multifamily, I'd like to see us put a, a house on each lot and get our taxes down. If not, we're gonna end up selling it to a developer, and then, then, you know, he'll come in here and he'll re, come over, PUD, and they'll, they'll get what they, you know, they won't get what they want, but it'll be a lot different. Believe me, I don't want to leave, I've been here too long. And I think it would make a win-win situation for all of us if we could get this done. And I think you'd find some of these other lots in town being developed, and they would be developed with nice little ranch houses, instead of, like the one that backs you over there, the two-story house right in the middle of the block?
Mm-hmm.
It comes down, there's another two-story down here, and that's what's happening, is the, the, the property doesn't really warrant a small house on it, a that small a house, if you gotta go up to get this square footage. So I was lucky, I built mine, it's twenty-one hundred square feet, years ago, and if I couldn't build it, I wouldn't, you know, back then, at that size, my house isn't big enough for two of his heart, and, you know, he's got kids, and they're in and out, and grandkids in that, and, and, so, you know, but I just hope they should really consider it, and, and in a way, the fact that I, I feel that seven hundred feet is, is appropriate for us to think about.
That's a good question, so, and I, you know, I tend to agree with you, a ten percent increase in lot coverage is, I, I have less of an issue with that than I do with the five-foot side yard setbacks, and that, that's probably where, I mean, where my concern is.
We're still dealing with the same thing, you take ten, uh, ten feet, ten feet, that's twenty feet, that's, that's a big chunk of property coming out there. And, and the thing is, is then you're gonna end up with a huge long building, like a, like a, the old military barracks. So, you know, that's my opinion, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, got it, okay. All right, seeing no one else, we will, we'll close the public hearing. Comments from the commissioners?
Fire safety hazard, I guess a lot of what's already been discussed makes sense to me in the, you know, I think doing one of these increases without the other doesn't really seem to address the, the underlying issue of making it feasible to, to do normally weighed-out single-family, or if, if desired duplex lots, so, the fire hazard was the biggest thing I had been concerned with reading through here. My tendency, other than that, of getting into the details, would be to maintain ten on the, on the other lane of the street line, rather than shifting that to five. Although I was interested, Fred, did I, can I hit Fred with questions?
Sure.
As we're going through discussion?
Yes.
If I understand correctly, that same asterisk node applies to single-family under medium, being able to go to five for the side street, so if we wanted to make sure that stayed at ten without specific accommodations, we actually need to change that in the other direction, right? Sorry, that wasn't very clear, you want me to try again? In other words, right now, as it stands, for RM zonings, single-family and duplex dwellings already can have five-foot side setbacks.
Right, that's from both the interior lot line as well as the abutting street line.
Right. Okay. So I, I don't know, I, I guess in general, I guess my comment then would be, if we're gonna try and force ten in, in general, across the, you might actually end up making that more restrictive, but-
You would, you were, you need to deal with then whether that ten-foot has a, a number ten superscript or not, is what you're saying, right?
Yep.
In the RM zone on a budding street.
So it's something else to consider, I'm not sure which way I swing on making it more restrictive than it already is there, but-
What would be your reasoning for making that more restrictive? I don't know what's the thought behind it.
I think, I mean, it's just the notion of having, a lot of these streets having a, you know, even just a two-story building that's within five feet of the sidewalk, stretching all the way along the side of that block, it's, it gives me that, an image of being downtown rather than in a residential neighborhood, I guess, if I'm picturing the-
It is downtown.
The project. Downtown in an urban, modern-day urban environment.
Yeah, I agree.
You're talking about, you're talking about RL.
So this is just, this is just street abutting.
Right, but that's for RL, because RM, I know, you're suggesting that RM-
That's what I'm wondering, is if, is there really that much of a difference? I mean, if you're going to RM, then somehow you're getting more, if somebody's taking advantage of it, there's more, presumably floor space at least, if not more, you know, somehow you're getting more dwelling units in there, so you're more apt to be tall. I guess I'm just, I'm not sure what the, the rationale would be for having a, a more relaxed requirement for something that's prone to be, being taller there. Because right now, you could come up into five with a-
Duplex.
Duplex on RM, and maybe that's the same thing, well, no, it's not the same thing for RL, that's part of what doesn't make sense to me.
And if you look at what's impacted, there's not much, I mean, you're talking about a little bit on fourth, you got fronts on, is that second, which should have to be twenty-five feet, but, I mean, there's not tremendous impact on what we have in town, but-
So I don't know, I'd be curious to hear contrary opinions on it, but staff's discussion of that made sense to me, that, um, I think if there was a case where you were already stuck with, I can't imagine there's any cases on our map where you get, end up with ten on both sides, right? We don't have any abandoned lot, or, you know, island lots, basically. So anyways, that was the remaining uncertainty I had. I think the forty percent's an easy, easy sell for me, and it's more a question of what's reasonable to do with the setbacks.
From my perspective, I'm on board with the forty percent, doesn't seem like a huge increase to me, but I'm more concerned about the side yard setbacks, and really question the need for changing it, because, as we've discussed, you're probably not gonna get more than a duplex on a single lot, and you can already do a five-foot setback under the current code, say, in the family or duplex on, in RM, so we're changing, we're proposing to change it for something that you'd have to do a lot line adjustment, or combine lots, or do a PD or something to get that anyways, you know, what's the, what's the point?
Yeah, and I, I'm kind of in the same place, but I, I, I'm struggling with, you know, with what Rick was saying, I mean, they want to stay here, and, you know, being able to put, I mean, it's more like the desire to change RL, but they're on RM, so RM has to be changed to accommodate, you know, a better style, single-family dwelling, because that's-
Not according to the way this is written.
I, I will.
You can do five.
If they do duplexes.
Or single-family.
Where does it say single?
No, that's only on the side yard.
Single-family and two-family duplex dwellings may have.
That's only on side yard abutting streets, right?
No, that applies to both, that asterisk is on both.
Correct.
That note ten is-
Both internal and external.
So that's side yard, principal, abutting street.
This only, all of this only applies to multifamily dwellings on RM, for all of the edits we're talking about.
So they have five now for single-family dwellings?
Yeah, correct.
Yes, but they only have thirty percent. But they only have thirty percent coverage?
Right.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you, so then-
But the other argument was is that if you obviously shrink the setback, either, you get a, you can actually, in order to go setback to setback, you can have a wider building.
Right.
And the potential to do more units than just a duplex.
Possibly.
Possible.
So can you repeat that, Fred, the setback to, setback comment?
Let's just take the interior lots, the change is to have five-foot instead of ten-foot, five-foot on each side, that's your setback.
Which they currently have for a single-family dwelling.
A single-family-
Or duplex.
Duplex, correct. So let's say you have only five-foot, that means, that's ten-foot, five-foot and five-foot is ten-foot, ten-foot from fifty is forty. That means if you go from setback to setback, you can have a, a unit that's forty feet wide, which would be legal. You could still get forty percent coverage by then going lengthwise to come up with-
Sixty feet.
Their total of forty percent footprint. And they would, in my view, they wouldn't have any problem meaning the front and rear setbacks either.
So in single and multifamily dwellings, they have these setbacks, and what, what they don't have is the forty percent coverage?
Single and duplex.
Right. For single and duplex.
Right, but not for a building that has more than two units.
I mean, my big concern is, what happens if this goes multifamily, and it, you know, it goes to apartments, and they do decide to sell it, and, you know, and, you know, we're looking at, at dealing with a true- know, we're looking at dealing with a true RM development that's going, and I think you're right, probably a PD would come in, but maybe, I mean, I guess it'd be up to the, to the owner, maybe not, they have the right to build within our, within our.
Why would you want to, I mean, that's, why would you want to build a bunch of little buildings if you could just build a bigger one?
Yeah, I mean, that's true, but I mean, they could, I mean, so, I'm concerned about making changes to our RM zoning in this area of town to create a situation where we could have wider buildings with this narrow, you know, with 10 feet between them. I just, that concerns me, it doesn't seem like, for the, for the use that the owners have, that they need much more than what they have now, just the increased percentage.
Lots.
Lot coverage, so that a larger house could be put on there, or even a duplex. You know, they'd have their five-foot. So I would, I'd be in favor of increasing the percent coverage, leaving the setbacks as they currently remain.
I think that, you know, Rick's comment about that would stop, you know, having the five feet and the 40% is going to stop people from building two-story buildings is erroneous. It's a spurious argument, because what's going to happen is they're going to build it wider and taller, because you can. You know, and so, and you're going to end up with canyons in between buildings, and with a 10-foot space between the buildings, if it's oriented north-south, you're not going to have sunlight during the day.
But you can already have that.
Already.
It's already a lot.
I know.
Right.
Yeah, so, but if you, but if you then, but so, in the RM zoning, though, if you change this to allow three-story, multi-family buildings, right, on combined lots, you're looking at really big, you know, it's just.
There's a public process that's going to have to be gone through if they want to combine lots.
Correct. There is.
To do that, I guess, but they can also go through the public process to combine lots for no reason other than to combine lots, they don't have to present their.
They could do that today, so.
We've asked.
Combine lots and build multi-family, and we're not changing that, that potential thing, I mean. And they have that use today, they would be grandfathered in regardless, we couldn't change that.
Right, except that, yeah, that's true, and.
Or, or is that true, or would they be, I mean.
I just want to make sure that you understand.
Not necessarily have.
That if a project in a zoned lot area, I think is multi-family, which is be over two units, that requires site plan approval.
Requires what?
Site plan approval. So it's not like it's a.
More than two lots?
No, it's not the lots.
More than two units, okay.
More than two units.
Do they have to show parking and?
All that stuff.
All that stuff, yeah.
Right.
So anyway, I don't have a problem with 40% lot coverage, but I'm telling you, it's going to, this is a situation, be careful what you ask for. So, you know, to people who, to people who own property that they want to build on, it may be a useful thing to have 40% lot coverage. To the other people who already have small houses and don't plan to build on them, it's going to change the character of the neighborhood for them. So I guarantee it changes the character of the neighborhood. So, you know, so is that a good thing or a bad thing? I don't know. I mean, you know, folks down here have been living in chains for a long time.
So, I mean, if you look at, again, looking at the impacted areas, so the, the copter parcels that are farthest west, I mean, it's just them, it's, it's.
Right.
The parcel that's charlene's in that area is across the street, there is one set of homes, but that's, they're separated by a creek, right? And the creek right, and the creek right here?
Or.
Yeah, so, the likelihood of them being impacted by that is slim. So then we're dealing with, with the section along fourth, and there is a street between the impacted.
Yeah, that's true.
So, I mean, it's not a dramatic, I mean, you know, it's not like it's interspersed throughout, that all of a sudden.
I agree.
You know, we're going to impact all of the RL that's in original town, so, but, but I, I have sensitive, like, concern, I'm trying to think, think that through, and how it's going to look.
We've been primarily talking about the lot coverage in RM, but the request is to change in RL as well, and.
It's true, there's a request, yeah.
And those are, pardon, the setbacks in RL don't change, though.
No, and effectively, the setbacks in RM aren't changing.
The request here, though, is to change the lot coverages in both zones. I think our discussion's primarily been in media, been saying that we're on board with that, but I think that it's a whole different, perhaps should be a whole different discussion to say, change the density in RL. I would feel.
The same argument was working for me both ways.
Yeah. Well, then I go to James's comment, that, yeah, if you go to 40% coverage in RL, then you are, then you are impacting everything, the existing lots and the, and the.
But effectively, the setbacks are changing, agreed. We aren't even proposing a change in the setbacks.
You can just put larger homes.
So all it's doing is stretching the available footprint. So when you talk about drastically changing the character, it'll be a 10% increase in depth.
They'll be deeper.
Yeah, they'd be deeper, they wouldn't be wider, and they won't be taller.
So I don't.
And they won't be taller, yeah.
Well, I think you can look at it, you can look at it also from a market standpoint, that basically, people are looking for a larger house. If you're adding 10%, that's 700 feet on the first floor, more than likely go to a two-story, it's 1,400 square feet. Now we're talking some addition to what you could have had previously. Over time, I mean, in my view, it seems like, over time, in order to preserve the single-family character of, the single-family character of original Superior, is to allow the market to have some of that change, which you would get a larger house, which puts pressure over the long haul on the smaller houses that are much older. But sooner or later, I mean, those lots are worth a fair amount of money now.
And you can't get any farm.
And so therefore, it's, it's difficult to pay a lot of money for a lot and be forced to put a, you're basically putting a smaller house on. An extra 1,400 square feet starts to help, you know, the neighborhood change, albeit in a gradual way. But I think in terms of, if there's a goal to maintain the single-family use in original Superior, that's one way to do it, because you're allowing some changes there, but you're, you're not forcing the pressure on taking these lots and transferring them to some other use that's not single-family. You're taking some of that pressure off. That would, just a comment.
Yeah.
I'm not a market specialist.
And the point taken, it's not going to happen overnight, yeah, but it's probably a decade for, for things to slowly transition.
Just so, you know, I just did the math, too, real quick. 6,000 square foot lot, a 150 by 140, 40% is 2,400 feet. So that's the size, single fam, or single-floor home you could build. Two-story, you could build a 4,800 square foot home on that lot.
Whoa.
Yeah, you don't wind up going square and square.
I'm just, right, you could go square and square, I'm just saying.
You could, you wouldn't want to, but.
I'd say, it would be allowable amount, would be.
Wouldn't be hard to put a 3,000 square foot home.
But, but think about putting a garage in there, right?
Right.
You put a garage on that first floor, and now you're at a.
About 20, yeah.
What is it?
Reasonably, I mean.
2,000, at least 2,000.
Think about 3,000 square foot, oh, I mean.
Which is still not, you know, certainly by Superior standards, is probably smaller still, but, unless you go two stories.
Right.
So, you know, I think your point was well-taken about the market situation, allowing, allowing that to change over time. I, I will always come down on the side of property owners' rights in this case. I mean, I think that, I don't think we're making a significant change to the character of original town by allowing this, for exactly the points we just talked about, that the setbacks are already allowed at 5 feet. If somebody's going to go bigger, they're just going to go deeper. I think allowing that, having that width anyway allows you to have maybe a little more backyard, a little more front yard, because you could make the house not as long and narrow. And that's got to be a better way to design a house, anyway. But, so that's just kind of where, where I come from. And the other, you know, the density isn't a bad word these days when it comes to sustainability and those types of things. I mean, having the ability to put two maybe viable duplexes on a lot now, that are, that are, could be deeper, because you get 40% coverage, you know, in walking distance to mass transit, and walking distance to the marketplace, and those things, those are, those are bad things that, for people to be talking about these days. So, you know, you could, you could literally live in Superior and not own a car if you really wanted to, right? I'm sure there are actually a lot of people that do, but it would be an option for more people, which is another, you know, pro for a town center development that has mixed uses. So, I just consider this, you know, a good way to utilize, to utilize land better than building more lots, selling Ochsner, you know, whatever, and building more homes. This may give the opportunity to develop original town in a little bit more dense fashion that could be healthy, so, that's where I come from.
Yeah, I'm on board with the increase in coverage, you know, and I'm good with the way the setbacks are set up. You know, I would, don't think I'd ever want to see five-foot setup setbacks on side corner lots next to the street, but nothing really going in that direction, so. I'm on board with the extra lot coverage, I think it is a good thing for flexibility within original towns.
Any other comments? Anyone? Anyone care to entertain a motion?
Sure.
Yeah, hi, Paul, I really just wanted to clarify and make sure I got this. So, the request was for RM sideyard setbacks be changed from 10 to 5, but currently, we do a 5 for single and duplex units, this would only impact.
More than two.
More than two units, okay. For both interior and abutting street, and that for RL, he's requesting go from 30% to 40%. We already have five-foot setbacks permitted because in single, in RL.
It's 10, 10 on the side yard, right?
Uh, 5 on the side yard, RL, 5 on the side yard, right?
Interior.
10 on the street.
10, let's see. Yeah, 10 if you're abutting street, right? 5 on interior, 10 if you're abutting street, okay. And so he's requesting that be 5.
It is 5.
No, he's 5 on, I'm assuming by the, by the general statement of the request, five-foot setbacks, that would be anywhere where it's 10, change it to 5, and that would, that would be abutting, street abutting, okay.
That's not a motion. Yeah, we can add.
Well, we can do whatever we want for the motion, but the staff, but the staff's recommendation.
I had concern about the street side.
Yeah, I had this concern about the street from, okay. Okay, that verifies it for me. I know what I don't want, I don't know if I can form it into a motion, but.
Give it a whirl.
So this would be, just to clarify.
Recommend approval of.
Of this, and then whatever recommended changes that I want to make along with it, right? So, all right, so, I'll make a motion to, because to recommend to the Board of Trustees, in ordinance amending Section 16-191 of the Superior Municipal Code, per staff recommendation, with the following changes. Let's see, you're actually.
I think they're actually enumerated in the actual ordinance draft already.
Yeah, I don't, let's see, so.
Yeah, he wants to change those changes to different changes.
So the side yard material setback is amended from 10, so.
So strike.
I'd want to strike Section 1A, which is changing the side yard from 10 feet to 5 feet, leaving footnote, leaving it as-is, so leaving footnote 10.
See, that, delete A as-is.
We're just, we're just, really just delete A.
Just basically, yeah, we're deleting, deleting A, just removing A from the ordinance.
Okay, go ahead, sorry, finish.
Side yard for B, the abutting street, is amended from 10 feet to 5 feet. So we'd be, so that staff recommended to strike B, did not have, for RM, from 10 feet to 5 feet. So I would, I think we want to strike B, is that correct?
Yes, strike A and strike B, and.
And then approve C.
We need to correct C.
Increasing the lot coverage from 30% to 40%.
For RM and RL.
For RM and RL, correct. All right.
Why was the ordinance draft not inclusive of RL?
It was, it was just a mistake, just missed.
We'll allow you one.
Well, blame it on the attorney. We should, it's not here.
Perfect. Okay. So we got that, right?
So move to, move to recommend approval of the thing with A struck and B struck, and C amended to include RL.
Yes.
Okay.
So we have a motion by Commissioner McCool, and a second by Commissioner Hinkle, Vice Chair Bruce Hinkle. Well, it's a discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. Okay. Thank you. That concludes item.
So effectively, what we just did, just sort of clear, is we made it so you can build a single-family home or a duplex on these lots with 40% lot coverage and, and five-foot setbacks.
We didn't change that.
I know, I'm just saying, that's what, that's what you can do right now. And if you want to do multi-family on these lots, more than two units, you're coming back anyway.
Yeah.
At which point, we can discuss variances to the code if we need them.
And even if you want to do five-foot against the street, you can easily come in and do a PD, right?
Or a request or something, right? Okay.
A request.
Good? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Okay, moving on to item six, staff announcements and miscellaneous.
Um, let's see, on the development front, Calmonte is, has been discussing with the town the possibility of coming back to amend their PD to allow mixed use on the commercial portion of their property, which is the west side of that property, and what they're thinking is commercial, retail on the first, residential on the second.
Because that residential's just.
So, it sounds like they're going to submit something for that, so, let you know, when we do, receive that. Guardian Storage has indicated to us that they're going to begin the process to submit their final development plan, and start moving forward with that. And then the last item is Remington Homes has indicated that they plan on resubmitting tomorrow for their annexation and PD.
Wow. Okay.
Just in time to get a 40% lot coverage, they'll be so happy.
Well, they're under a PD anyway.
Yeah, they're under. So we'll let you know if we receive that and what it looks like.
Our session's over.
We're going to build retail, we're going to build more houses, we're going to build a storage unit, man, things are just cooking in.
That's where they store all our gold.
That's it.
Um, and that's all I have, but I don't know if you have any-
Yeah, oh, yeah, go ahead.
No, I don't have any further time.
Okay. Anything, any other announcements?
No, um, well, might be of interest to the planning commissioners, the Board discussed a home rule task force last night. They opted to not make any appointments to a task force, but let the process be open to anybody that wants to participate, so, as we have meeting dates and information as far as those dates and times and where, locations, we'll put that on the website and let you know in case any of you are interested, Commissioner McCool's interested, so. The task force originally was planned on just looking at all the information and coming up with either one recommendation or a set of recommendations to give to the Town Board on whether or not to proceed with home rule or other options that might be available to the town, so.
Hey, I have a question. Did anybody hold the Superior Town Hall sign up to our current signage code?
That's a very good question.
And if not, why? And I already know the answer because it's clearly in violation, so why couldn't we abide by our own planning code for? And, and as, as a, you know, a, a sort of a second, part B of that question, how come the planning commission didn't have an opportunity to look at it before it even showed up?
There was no direction given to staff to bring before the planning commission.
Okay, so what's the, so what's the square footage of the sign?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay.
I can get that for you.
Yeah, just, aside from being, you know, aesthetically horrid, it doesn't meet our own code. So, now we, we have the biggest, most garish sign in the neighborhood, and we're gonna go around telling people that they can't have big signs or, or scrolling signs or, you know, LED signs, and yet, from a planning perspective, once again, it just doesn't cut the mustard.
I couldn't agree more, frankly. And we had more input on the sign that went up by Discovery Park, which I wasn't in favor of either, but in the grand scheme of things, it doesn't, it's not that noticeable, it doesn't look that bad, but whatever. I, I am completely in agreement with Commissioner McGinnis.
What's the, what's the off-the-top-of-your-head cost of that sign?
Total cost of the sign was approximately $44,000.
I, I did all that, I think I'd even, might even suggest that we request, I mean, if the planning commission is in full agreement about the concerns of this, that we ask for that to be put in the minutes and pass along, have our concerns pass along to the Board of the Minutes.
Yeah, it's absolutely, it's, it's absolutely anathema to planning, it's, it's a, it's a kick in the face to developers and franchises that want to come here with-
And as you see, for those over here, can't for the life of them get what they need to draw, drive people in.
Right, right. So, and that's a full-color TV screen kind of thing, like, am I correct, that it's gonna be like the, the one at the Bloomfield Event Center, except smaller?
The purpose of the sign is to be able to provide information to our citizens about things that are going on in the community.
Because we don't have any other way to do it.
But, the, the concern always is that it's never enough.
I, I realize that, but so-
And by having multiple organizations-
But putting motion on the side of an already ridiculous, busy intersection, we're creating a road hazard. We're not adding, we're not-
Let him respond.
Okay, sorry. It's a bad move.
Okay, let's move on to, uh- Can I request that this concern be passed off by us?
I think, I think, maybe I wrote it down, so, all right, thanks.
I was watching it write, so I assumed it got, it's gonna make it in there, so, so, okay, well, we'll adjourn the, the regular commission meeting.
I don't think it was your fault, Matt.
No, yeah, but it's not your fault.
Well, why don't you tell us, we wanna know. If I find out it was, I'm coming for you now.
Definitely not your fault, but, but yeah, we will, we're gonna hunt them down. Okay.
You signed that P O.
So, and we're calling the session, the work, uh, the work session to discuss Chapter 16 of the Superior Municipal Code, which is item number two. And Matt, do you want to take us through this?
You should let me have Fred.
Or Fred. He's too, he's still fuming over that.
Right. Well, all right, we're, well, first of all, everything in the packet, you all got a packet. It has the changes for chapter, or I mean, Article 7, and a list of, or a summary of the changes for Article 8. And then there were, I believe, three other lists. One was a list of future things, that list will grow longer. There's a list of questions for the attorney, and that list will grow a little longer. And I believe that's it for this, for this packet. So, we're gonna discuss the changes, starting off with Article 7, which is a, a short one, and it deals with rezonings and zoning amendments.
Uh, just, well, maybe, we can, we'll get, never mind, I'll come to it when we get to the items concluded in the current review and section, or the, I'm sorry, the items for possible for, for future consideration.
You want to come back to that afterwards?
I, let's just chat about that at the end, I just have one thing that we, sorry, sorry to interrupt.
All right. All right, the first one, there's, it's a, it's a technical, it's a technical change that allows, um, if a, if a language, or if there's a change that's a desire, that a request was reviewed, the change was made from 45 to 75 days when it has to be reviewed.
That was deleted.
And that was deleted, okay? So, that would be on page, I believe, 57.
Right. It's, yeah, I've got it up on that.
You got it on the screen?
I've got it.
Oh, here it is. Where is it? Where is it? That was deleted, so I mean, you know, basically, there's a request made, it's processed.
Right.
Okay? And we're not confined to a specific time period to get on with it. The thought there is, you have, you have at least one, maybe two staff reviews, where, initial staff review, the applicant's gotta respond to those comments that are made, and then resubmit for staff review, and then it's gotta be scheduled for the planning commission and then the Town Board after that, so, to try to fit it in within that timeframe can be a little tight sometimes, so, the thought here is, if we need the additional time for review, we have it, and we don't have to worry about trying to meet specific-
Well, so, we're just scrapping the, the, the days altogether, essentially?
Yeah.
Okay, and should there be, though, some-
There has to be an outer limit.
Well, some, yeah, I don't think something should, should get bogged down by staff in perpetuity, right?
I mean, we can put a timeframe in here, rather than deleting it, we could add it back in and change the, the dates from-
I mean, the thing that, you mentioned that there's a step, apparently, after receiving the petition, where you're stuck waiting on the applicant, and I can see where that complicates your time estimate. You can't sign up for any number if there isn't a constraint on how quickly they need to respond.
Right.
Is there a way to reword that? I guess upon final, you know, you know, I guess, acceptance of petition edits?
Couldn't you give some, some timeframe within, that within event A happening, that event B will happen, so that, you see what I'm saying? So that if the applicant has submitted a completed petition or application or whatever, that it will go before the planning commission within 90 days, or, you know, something, and then once, once that has happened, it will then go, once, you know, event B has happened, it will, event C will happen, which will be another 90 days, or so, you know, something that's, that gives you kind of the flexibility you're looking for, but doesn't allow there to be no, no date, you know what I mean?
Well, I would suggest something to get started, but I don't know about the other one, because you could have several public hearings, depends on the complexity of the issue, so-
And I think I'm just talking-
I mean, the process would just, once it's started, then the process would proceed, and it has always proceeded in a logical manner, but you're talking about just getting it started.
I, I'm just saying that we shouldn't, we shouldn't, as a town, if, if there's, an applicant has come forth with something, I don't think we should sit on it.
I don't either.
So, I mean, and I don't, I'm not suggesting that you do, I'm just suggesting that-
There's value to having this language in there.
That there's some value to having some-
To property owners.
Yes. I mean, the applicant may choose to go six months without doing anything, but once they do do it, we've got, then the clock starts ticking again, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, let us look at-
From the town's response stamp.
We'll put that on the list for future consideration, and, and we'll look to see what kind of language we can come up with that makes sense.
Thanks.
The problem is that it, it, it's a very one-sided thing, because it removes the requirement for the town to move, but it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily offer any benefit.
Presumably, there's some kind of blanket statutory law that doesn't let us just sit on things forever, but you shouldn't have to resort to that, especially if we already have this language. It sounds like it just needs an update and clarification of the wish.
And you shouldn't be, we shouldn't be arbitrarily constrained by 45 to 75 day window, you know, this, whatever. I totally agree with what you're saying, I just-
We can-
Think we should figure some reasonable solution. Time is money, after all. Is that good for item one? So, item two, the notice for public hearings was increased from seven days to no later than 15 days and no earlier than 30 days.
Right, gives you a little longer notice.
This allows additional time for, for public notification.
Right.
By saying no later than 15 days?
No, yeah.
Let's see, it was increased from-
That means, that means you can't be any closer to the meeting at which the thing is gonna be heard than 15 days.
Basically requires 15 days notice.
Yes.
Okay, minimal.
And now we're-
And it gets submitted out so early that they forget about it.
I'm not sure it says that, but I, what is it, I'm not sure what this is saying.
We're trying to do all of the notices of publications, such as in 16 dash 2 dash 16, which is not less than seven, no more than 30. So, everything is uniform, and we all go back to that one section of the code, and this doesn't say that.
Doesn't do it?
It, it's got a different timeframe, and I thought when we were going through all of it, we were trying to keep everything the same.
Well, then let's do that.
And that was seven to 30, not 15 to 30?
No, seven to 15.
Not less than seven, no more than 30 days.
No more than 30.
Seven to 30.
Right, just so that, you know, we're not looking here for one of them and here for another, and then get confused because we didn't look for the right one.
So, basically, over that 21-day or 23-day period, you, you almost always will hit two, potentially one, at least one, but probably two meetings of either the planning commission or the Board of Trustees. Is that fair, statement?
Yeah, but that's not the point.
No.
The point of this, the point of this is-
You're notifying them from public hearings.
The public is aware that the meeting is gonna happen.
I understand that, I understand that, but you also wouldn't want, you don't want to give the notice too close to the meeting, you also don't want to delay the applicant more than 30 days.
Correct.
And you would- I'm just saying, so likely you'll hit at least one, maybe two, two regularly scheduled meetings.
Over the 7.
Right, exactly, see what I'm saying?
No.
Okay, forget it. It's not really relevant, I'm just-
But it sounds like if this is the original, we need to add 30 days and never mind the 15.
I'm for what Phyllis said.
That's what we have. That's, I made a note to that moment.
She does this stuff all the time, she knows.
Then the question is, we make that change, and do you want to include it in this review or pull it out for separate review?
Oh, I think we can include it in the review.
Yeah, okay.
Does, I don't think we need to discuss it again, do we?
Yeah.
Okay. Item three, the distance requirement by property owner for protests was changed from 500 feet to 100 feet. This change lessens the requirement for someone to submit a protest, seems like it increases the requirement. Should that say 100 feet or 1,000 feet?
No.
I think, if I remember right, I think the attorney changed that because by state law. Do you remember that, that change?
Has something to do with the formal protest-
Formal protest.
Formal protest of a zoning change, which-
And I thought he went to the state statute.
That's very possible, but I don't remember him actually saying that, but they changed it, I mean, they wanted this changed. This expands, so, um-
500 feet to 100 feet.
No, but you need to get 20% of signatures in that radius to file a protest, so the smaller the number, the lesser the requirement.
That's what the thought was.
Oh, 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 that makes sense.
Read, yeah, 16, 7, 40, B1.
I still don't understand it.
You have to read the deal.
What did you say, to read?
To be valid, but to have to show.
Show, be signed by the owners of either 20% or more of the land subject to the proposed change, or by 20% or more of the area of the land extending a radius of 100 feet from the boundary of the land, which is subject. So, you have to get 20% of the people within 100 feet?
Right.
So, you might only need one person theoretically, or two people or something, right?
Right.
Which is a good thing.
Right, that's better than-
Unless there's nobody within 100 feet.
But then you don't have to get any signatures, you can just show up and protest.
Oh, okay.
You'd be, you'd be the one.
So, anybody can protest.
But do I have to be within 100 feet to protest?
Well, the sign of the petition, and that's what this thing is saying, I still come to the meeting and protest it.
But so, if I have a protest that's, that I think is valid, and I live over the hill, but the thing's happening down here, and nobody lives down here.
Yeah, the thought was to try and lessen the number of signatures, even if the downside is-
What if somebody proposes to put something on Charlene's property and nobody lives within 100 feet of it, then what? No signature required, just show up and protest?
Or no protest.
Or no protest.
There's no, there's, there's no ability to do a formal protest.
Right, it removes the ability to do a formal protest.
Well, it doesn't matter because there's nobody there.
Right.
They were the ones that are affected anyway, so if you, so they, in other words, like, if I'm filing a protest and you're close by, you have a little bit more legal standing than just coming to the meeting and, and standing up and saying, "I don't like this."
Right, so what if, what if, what if Suzanne over here, who's probably 500 feet maybe from Charlene's property, has a problem with something that's a zoning change on Charlene's property? She is not going to be able to file a formal protest because she is outside of 100 feet.
Right.
And it's very possibly nobody within 100 feet of Charlene's property, so nobody could file a protest.
Right, but then the folks that may not be within that radius, if they are against it, they'll come to the hearing and guess what?
But they don't have as much legal standing.
They have a fair amount of clout anyway, because all of a sudden, you've got 15 people out there saying, "We don't want to see this," and it almost carries about the same amount of weight as someone who signed a petition because they're within 100 feet.
Well, I agree with that, they can do that even if we leave it at 500 feet, but that doesn't change that, so. What's, what's the attorney, you said the attorney wanted to make this change, what's the rationale, is it, was there a stat, a statutory reason?
Well, I think Phyllis said it, I think, we can, we need to, that's a question for the attorney now.
Okay, add it to the list.
Let's quote it and we'll ask the attorney, and let's stop talking, unless you want to add your comment. Okay, item TF. Item four, decrease the time allowed for submission of a protest prior to the public hearing from 72 hours to 24 hours, this allows more time for a protest to be submitted.
That means that it used to have to happen 72- That means that it used to have to happen 72 hours before the meeting, now it only has to happen 24 hours before the meeting, that's a good thing.
That's a good thing.
Except nobody can protest.
Except nobody can protest because nobody's within 100 feet.
Unless they were, had to now have a five-foot setback, in which case, they're now within 100 feet.
So, I do.
Okay.
I gotta volleyball playing deep over, have to go get it up.
Okay.
Yeah, volleyball's an indoor thing, Phyllis.
Here.
Here.
Unfortunately.
That's okay, we leave in the current review.
It's fine with me, I guess the only question was, is that also related to the statutory request or something else, I don't know if we should pull it or not.
I can't.
I think it's a good thing, and I'm fine leaving it, so, okay. All right. Okay.
We're good with that, leaving it?
Okay. Article eight subdivisions, this article 16 and 17 of the current code, section 16-8-10B7, was added to the yellow, not yellow, to allow subdivision flats to be phased if the phasing sequence is identified.
Yeah, I wonder if that popped up. Well, phasing is on page 58, number seven.
So, I'm assuming there was no prior allowance for phasing, that's what this is getting at?
Right, and it's not even read in the, in the text either, so it's number B7, on page 58. Right, Matt?
That is correct.
All we're asking for there is, I mean, this happens a lot, well, it could very easily happen in maybe some of the stuff that we have maybe coming before us, and so, they're going to plat this whole thing, but they want to be market sensitive. The PD itself allows them to do it in, if it's a PD, that you're allowed to do it in phases, all foreign parts, and normally, then, if it's in parts, they'll plat, you know, as far forward as they want, as they feel they can, you know, envision themselves being, if you understand what I mean, developers want to cover their bases a little bit, so, and if you're dealing with a PD, sometimes, someone who comes along and needs a lot, needs something different than what you might have imagined, and if you're not even into that phase yet, why plat it?
I mean, a buyer's coming forward that may want to have a kind of specific requirement, and you can make it work, so.
Right, and we've done some replating up here in the marketplace, for example, and they didn't have it all platted out at once, we kind of went along, and that worked well because it kind of then goes with what FDPs are wanting to be done and stuff like that.
Makes sense.
Here, all you're doing is asking for, you know, a schedule of development, does that mean they have to hold to it? Probably not, but at least it gives you an idea of how they plan to march through this bugger, and that's helpful.
Seems reasonable to me.
Yeah.
Okay. Are we good? Section 16-8, number two, sorry, 16, section 16-8-20C1B, the timeframe for the requirement for title insurance policy was changed from 30 days to no later than 60 days prior to the application, section 16-372C2 of the current code.
Right, it's on page 60.
So.
Yeah, we try to, we try to, we want the title to remain as current, but the way sometimes submissions go and so on, you're getting into the, before you get into the process, we're already 60 days from the point at which they submit their stuff, but at that point.
So, we're just giving them a little more leeway?
Yeah, give them more. The difference between one and two months isn't a heck of a lot when a developer is, it's hard to believe that the ownership's going to change, I mean, that's what it's all about, to make sure that the title work is current, and this stuff gets beyond 60 or 90 days, it starts to get, make it stale on you.
Should later read earlier? That doesn't make sense to me.
Later than 60 days.
That means you would, you could do it two years before, and that's.
Yes, it says no later than 60 days prior.
Like you should say earlier.
No la, no earlier than 60 days, no.
Yes.
That's probably correct.
No earlier than 60 days prior.
Earlier.
Sounds weird.
Oh, right, you don't want the title insurance too early, is that what you're saying?
Right.
Right, you want it to be fresh.
Right, is that correct?
Right, because if it's, well, wait a minute, yeah, if it's, if it's, if it's 61 days, then it's.
Earlier.
It's too early.
Is that within 60 days?
So, we want it to say no earlier than 60 days.
Or within 60.
Prior to the application.
That would be clear.
So, we want.
Or within 60 days of the application.
Right, we want the title work to make sure it's as current as possible. But 30 days was too restrictive?
Yeah, yeah, because sometimes in the submitting of it and going back and forth, all of a sudden, 30 days has gone by, and what do you do, tell them to turn around, redo a new title commitment? That's like a lot of money.
Okay.
And.
Just make that change.
It's going to change anyway.
Yeah, drastic.
Let's just make that.
Within.
Within 60 days of the application.
No, no, no.
No earlier?
No, I think, I think Bob had it right, dated within 60.
Right.
Days of the application.
Okay. Sweet. Item, item three, section 16-8-20C2, the timeframe, 15 days in the current code review, exemption applications was removed to allow greater flexibility.
All right, this is a subdivision exemption.
It's the same as before.
Well, here we go.
I would recommend, Matt, that we put that one back the way it was, or you reword it, just like the prior concern we had.
What is an exemption application?
16.
This is basically asking special permission against something that would normally be in the code, when we're reviewing, or whenever an applicant has something they want to deviate from the code on.
Okay.
So, it's a property, well, it's a property owner developer coming forward, looking for something.
So, this is saying this.
Edit, remove the requirement for the manager to respond in due time, does that make sense?
No.
So, put that back in. Well, 15 days is.
Is that restrictive?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, do you guys want to take this and talk about it, pick a different number, and we'll talk about it later?
Well, what they did was they, you don't want a number in there, is what you're saying.
Yeah.
Okay.
Seems reasonable, doesn't it?
We'll pull it and come up with a number and bring it back into consideration.
Okay. Okay, item four, section 16-8-30A, four and five were added to provide further clarification of a minor subdivision.
Oh, sorry, just four and five.
This does not require the creation of additional streets, parking, drainage, subdivision, a minor subdivision is any subdivision that meets the following criteria, number four, that does not require the creation of additional streets, parking drainage facility, or other public improvements necessary to support the proposed development, and that does not involve the dedication of land right-of-way or easements for public improvements or payment of fees in lieu of such dedications.
Sounds good to me.
Agreed. Make it so.
Are we good with that?
Yeah, if we were to include any of those, we would consider.
It would be a major subdivision, right?
Right, and we would go through that process.
Okay. Item five, language regarding approval of minor and major subdivisions and final plats has been revised to review and comment by the planning commission and approval by the town board.
Now, this is connected to the review process chart, which you'll see at the next meeting, that's within articles one through five that we went through, and my assumption is you'll want to pull that and look at that review process, how it is now, and possibly pull for future consideration, so, if that's the case.
It's a substantive change.
Right, yeah.
We went through it once.
Yeah, I know.
We'll have to modify this based on that discussion.
Right, and.
So, should we pull it?
Yeah.
Put it on that.
Yep.
Right, and my comment is, is that, need to work over this language a little bit, if we decide that, well, the process is, for a minor subdivision, the staff looks at sort of a sketch plan and a pre-application, and the planning commission gets the plat when it's ready to go, that's when you guys get involved, and there's a little bit of confusion in this language, how that basic process works, I mean, that's the way the new chart is set up now, because I went back and looked at it, you guys can look at it again, because it's part of what we changed back in, was it part five or something like that?
But this doesn't reflect.
But this language here is, there's still a little bit of unclarity in here as to how this works, because you drop down to C, it says submittal requirements, and they should submit the following on a sketch plan, but really, that's up there in a pre-app meeting, and what they really need to submit is a final plat, you know, even though it says down here later on, we're talking about a final plat, see what I mean? So, well, this particular section needs to be cleaned up a little bit, in my view.
But it makes more sense to do that after we revisit the table.
Yes.
So, are you pulling this whole section?
Yes.
Wow, just this.
Well.
The description of an action.
You'll see in red, it says, you know, review and comment.
I see that, but this relates to the entire 16-8-40 section, right? Potentially?
Well, there's other parts. No, there's other elements to it that aren't necessarily affected by the review process.
Right, once you get beyond minor subdivisions, it's just a little bit more straightforward.
Okay.
But the chart part affects major subdivisions also, so.
So, either way, we're going to pull it.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on, number six, section 16-8-30B, a major subdivision was changed to simply state that is any subdivision that is not a minor subdivision, section 16-371C of the current code, a minor subdivision is defined as six or fewer lots or condominium units. So, anything above that is major, and got to go through the major subdivision process.
That's, that's pretty.
Simple is good.
Simple is good.
Okay, six is okay.
Agreed. Good with that, everyone? Item seven, submittal requirements were added for minor subdivision applications, 16, section 16-8-40-C, so this is new language, right?
Does this fall under the same as item five? We should straighten it out first.
Yeah, we'll straighten it out.
Or finalize it, let's straighten it out.
Yeah, I think, well, I have some ideas about how to clarify this.
Okay.
Okay, so, revisit that.
Yep.
Eight.
Eight, submittal requirements for a preliminary plat, six, section 16-8-50C, were brought over from section 16-884 of the current code, these are additions to the superior development application standards, no significant revisions were made.
Yeah, that just marches on.
So, yeah, they, we want to put all the submittal requirements in one section, so they don't have to flip back and forth.
Good thinking.
Try to.
Good with that, everyone?
There we go.
Item nine, submittal requirements for a final plat, section 16-8-50E, were brought over from section 16-884 of the current code, these are in addition to the superior development application standards.
Do both of these last two also fall into the same potential touch-up category off of the table?
Well, I'm, I'm pretty, I'm pretty good with, with these submittal requirements things, both A's and I's.
Okay, it looked like they were separate, but even though they're in the same section.
And I believe, I had a typo on page 63, you've got a major subdivision, and you march down through there, you got A is 1, 2, 3, 4, and then you get down farther, there's another 4, so it should be a 5, on page 63, I don't know why, you guys don't need to discuss that, it's just a numbering thing.
No, I'm with you.
Okay, and that pretty much does it.
Great. Okay. Let's see, so this is the list I requested, items that are included in the current review, right?
Okay.
Yes?
Yeah.
So, this is the list, and then.
This kind of serves as a meeting notes.
And then, items for possible future consideration stuff, this is all the list of things we polled, right?
Right.
For either questions, or we polled for future discussion, or and/or questions for the attorney, or the questions the attorney have their own, I see there's a list on the back, but.
There is, and we can, if there's any one of those that you would like to add to the list of questions for attorney, we can add those, if there's something related to one of those items, we can add it.
But this was, this was article six, the zoning districts, but we didn't, you haven't created this list for the previous articles?
We are working on that, yeah. I tried to get it for this meeting, but just didn't have it done, so, we'll have it for the next meeting.
Too busy building a site.
Yes.
Oh, man.
He was out lobbying for this.
Yeah, too busy.
I will have that, so, yeah, this, these two lists will get fairly lengthy as we go through.
No question. But, but better than 400 pages of stuff, right? You get to the meat of it.
Unless there's any additional questions on those two articles, question for next meeting is, what do you want to tackle as far as?
Well, what's, yeah.
Well, the next one is nine, which is vacation of flat street and right-of-way, that's going to be pretty simple, article 10, though, is PDs, and there's some real meat in that, so, if we can do nine and 10.
Do we have anything else on the agenda for the next meeting? So, we could theoretically tackle nine and 10?
Yes.
You're going to be gone? It's October 6th.
Did I tell you, I was, I did, I told you that, right?
You did.
Glad I'm not the only one.
Yeah.
Well.
I think I said I could be gone, right?
Maybe, maybe you did, I.
I could tell.
I sent it to Matt, Matt, what did it say?
October, I'm trying to remember, another, oh, I don't know yet, it's up in the air, whether I will be here or not, so it might be yours. Will you be able to be here on the sixth?
It's a work session, so, whoever should.
Right. Okay.
I think I can.
So, I just don't know.
Really, nine and 10 on the sixth?
Let's plan on that.
Okay.
At least, right now, we don't have anything.
Does it, does it make the most sense to plow the head to the end, or is there a need to back up to sections that are associated?
Well, the thought was, we'll finish up the articles one through five, and is that what you're trying to?
Oh, in terms of summarizing them, yeah, that makes sense.
And, and then, from those, we'll list the substantive changes in those, and we can visit those at the next meeting, or could I identify from those lists what you would like pull for future consideration?
Yeah, it makes sense to finish summarizing them before we back up.
Well, I would go, I mean, I'd go through at least 11.
Just to keep up our momentum.
Or 211, I'd get through 10, which is the next meeting.
Yeah.
And then, get through PD, and at that point, you could turn around and, or even maybe 11 is site development plan, you could turn around and tackle, go backwards and say, okay, is this a chart or process, you know, and try to get that kind of coordinated and organized. and organized, and then end up with whatever you want to do.
We can make sure in a couple of weeks, or I guess on the 6th, that we're ready to do that.
You could even go through 11, which is site plan. That comes up on chart two, site development plans, billing permits, get through that. But beyond that, 12 is vested rights, you know, then it just goes on to these other sections, which are much more discreet. We're dealing with the guts of it in terms of process and requirements up through the first 11 articles. If we can get that kind of organized and clear in our head what we're leaving till the future, what we have agreed on, and what we've got left over for the attorney to deal with, that would be, I think that would be helpful, helping to more compartmentalize this thing.
Yeah. Yeah, that's why I was curious whether we wanted to back up before we made it to the way to the end.
I'd kind of pick up on that. I mean, I think that would work, in my view, logically. I don't know. Depends on your, on your logic train.
Okay. Anything else? Okay.
Well, if we have an ice rink across the street, and we got the cool shiny color sign across the street, do we get to get like Disney on Ice coming in and out of Superior now? Crank up all the, or cage fighting? Just asking.
Okay.
Thank you.